So, how do we begin?
Well, with what you're wanting from the session today. So, the first Shadow Work Weekend I attended had such a huge impact on me, because it was the first place in my life where I'd been with people who were willing to explore this dark and shameful territory with me and be 100% there with me. And in a way, overcome my own fear and shame of my past and what had happened to me.
I'd been through some grief with my mum dying and I had to hold my opinions and my presence with some very strong male presences in my family. And that's been hard for me in my life.
Because I lost my wife some years ago and I never resolved that grief in myself, despite quite a few hours of traditional talking, therapy counselling.
I guess I was looking for something that was slightly different to therapy and looking to like better myself, find me and find the areas that I'm struggling with.
There are many cool wounding for me. At the nub of it, it's about worth and the nub of it, it's about whether I'm a bad person.
I hadn't found anything that helped me in the same way that Shadow Work has, because it gave me a chance to realise that something wasn't the whole of me.
Your too emotional message, that was one of my things that I have believed about myself for a really long time.
Yeah, I didn't matter. The colour of my skin, me in this society, meant I was a disposable type of individual. And that's been sat kind of deep inside of me for most of my life.
I'd go through a life being sort of placid, maybe a bit of a doormat, you know, help anybody, do anything for everybody, until something would happen and I just, I'd just go into really quite rage. I could never understand why and it was very damaging.
The imposter syndrome, you know, actually, who am I really to be stepping up? Can I really trust my truth, my voice in the space?
Well, I first came to Shadow Work when I was feeling very lonely, very alone in the world and I didn't understand why. I couldn't really believe that anybody would love me or stick by me or care about me.
And to respect myself and to know that I am enough and that I do have a voice and I can have that voice.
Well, the beauty of this work is that it's led by the client. So, we see the client as being the expert on themselves. We can listen and try and understand as much as we can and as deeply as we can, but we'll never know the other person as well as they know themselves.
I want to uncover my true feelings and what I need to understand and the way forward around my mother's death. So, caught up in that are complications around my relationship with my brothers, my relationship with men, my relationship with my mother. And mostly, I have a feeling that when I was a kid, I think I developed a personality that would keep me safe. I developed a nice person so that people would like me, so that I wouldn't get into conflict. I want to uncover what is really me and what is a survival personality.
So, it's working with the parts of us that we don't know well. Often, we push them away because we fear that they're destructive. We're really ashamed of them.
I think for much of our life, we are trying to disown those parts of ourselves or we're told we should. And this work does exactly the opposite. It brings it out of the shadow, gives you an opportunity to understand it, welcome it home. And in doing so, often take the charge out and resolve the conflict that's there.
Which is just such a relief and to be able to go, oh, that's not the whole of me. Let's step back and hear just that one part and I'm not so immersed in it or stuck in it. And that's just incredible.
So, in Healing the Shadow, we work with a theoretical framework based on four archetypes. These archetypes are traditionally known as the lover, the warrior, the magician, the sovereign. In Healing the Shadow, we use the terms feeling body, action taker, transformer and heart centred leader. And these archetypes give clients a reference frame for what's going on for them, for where their wounding is and what their pathway to healing might be. You know, there's something I think about the warrior that's where you are only thinking about yourself. You know, it's really important that we have that capacity.
Is it?
Yes.
But all the men I know that have been like that all the time, I hate them.
That's why the archetype model works well, because this is a quarter of us, if you like. We have to have that quarter. We have to be able to step there and stand in that and know what we want without considering or thinking about anybody else.
Yeah, no, that's, I should know that, but I don't know.
No, that's where the wounding is.
And I've thrown that into the box, into the shadow with everything else. And that's a realisation, that's an aha moment for me. I've always wanted to hate the parts of men that are strong and boundaried and really give their opinion. But I had a suspicion that this was not serving me, that I had thrown some of my power away by deciding to be the nice guy.
There's often hidden gems in the shadows. So, once we've got to know them, we can choose which parts we want to keep and which parts we want to not use.
To have that dedicated time and focus, to be able to explore what's really going on, to go into the backstory, the family history, to have someone listen actively and authentically to you for that duration of time, that doesn't happen in our life.
I did a lot of work with my inner child on the carpet and my 11 year old, who was devastated and in trauma through her dad's death. And I just spent a lot of time with the facilitator talking to my little girl and listening to her, giving her attention, finding out what her experience had been like.
When we'd really pinned down very carefully what was going on for me and what sides of me I wanted to explore, we then stepped onto the carpet.
Take this board and place it where you imagine Simon to be in your inner world there.
So, the square carpet is my psyche, isn't it?
Yeah. And choose a colour to represent your brother. So, what we want to explore here is all the messages that you hear from Simon, what his behaviour says to you about you. So, it's not necessarily an accurate representation of him. You know, this is how he lives in your inner world.
Okay. Well, you're too nice.
So, that five hour session made up of time to build a relationship with the practitioner, share your story from your head, spend time unpicking emotions, digging up the garden and then to actually step onto the carpet and to embody and be and act out what you've spoken about for the first several hours, it closes the loop.
So, in Shadow Work, we listen to all parts so that after the session, it's much less likely that you're going to have a backlash. It's much more likely that the work's going to stick, because every part of you's been heard. And it takes a really well trained facilitator to laser in and make sure that all those different parts get the opportunity to be heard. And that if there are parts that are at odds with each other, parts that you're ashamed of or parts that disagree with each other, that there's work that can be done so that those parts can heal. You know, this is about healing. It's not just about bringing things out of shadow. It's about healing the wounds that caused us to put the things into shadow in the first place.
But the two sides that I really wanted to explore was the green cloth, which was the personality I had designed that was kind and compassionate and soft and loving and put other people before me.
So, put this green cloth on, let's suck you properly into this part. Just allow yourself to feel this in your body and to fully become this part of you that wants love and wants to connect.
Simon's sticking up for himself and there's some truth in the fact that we weren't getting what we needed. We weren't getting love and nurturing. There's something right in what he's saying and I have to grab little bits by him being wrong. And there's some shame around colluding with my parents about how wrong he is, hoping that if I'm on their side, they'll give me some love, but I didn't really get it. So, in a way, he's right. My loyalties were transactional. I've done quite a few years of carpet work, shadow work with various organisations and I'd heard about Mary Ann giving a five hour session and this gave me the opportunity of not necessarily doing a light piece of work, which is always my choice, to get maybe the wounded lover out or the magician and think about how my strategy would be to solve a problem. This time, in a five hour session with Mary Ann, was the opportunity to go a lot deeper than I'd been before.
And that can feel so scary for so many people. It's felt so scary for me. Why would I want to be in a relationship with parts of me that actually don't like me, that don't want my existence to count?
So much shame and fear about being seen to be kind of messy and not okay. And so, then it was like, yes, that's just a bit and I can also be strong and powerful.
There's a lot of energy caught in the shadow and that if you start looking at the shadow side, not only do you feel more whole within yourself, but you feel more alive.
There are things that I've said and done that I thought I'd be taking to my grave. That's my reality. And now I'm starting to see some way to heal those parts of myself.
How deep that buried stuff is, like getting it out and realising that there's massive amounts of gold in it. I think that's what shocked me is like, you think you've processed it, you think you've got it, you're like, I've got this boxed off, then you're going like, whoa, I didn't know that was down there.
It's that very first session had a huge impact on me because one of the things that I have believed almost my whole life, I just ended up going, actually, that's a load of rubbish.
So, one of the things that people aim to do is to get to know those parts of themselves, to bring them out of shadow and start to know and understand those sides of themselves so that they don't have a destructive force in their life, but so that they can use those parts consciously and deliberately.
I think when you consciously welcome the shadow, you tend to feel a relief that you're not resisting what's always been there. You no longer fight it and in that relief, something relaxes and then there's the invitation to engage with the material. Then something comes alive in that engagement, because you're, you know, you're getting back a part of yourself that you had lost.
So, this time I stepped onto the carpet and chose a purple cloth. This was a part of myself that was able to really stand up for myself and speak my truth. I kind of like this part of myself, but I realised I don't step into that side of myself very often in my life, because it can be a bit confrontational. It's not okay with me, all right?
We're not in denial of them anymore as being aspects of ourselves.
Because there's parts of me which I suppress, which I'm ashamed of really. I'm ashamed of some of the things I don't. And that's very, you know, keeps a lot of me, kept a lot of me buried. So, to allow that to be welcome into the room allows all of me to show up really.
All is welcome, my challenges, my defensiveness, my fear, all of that stuff, it was allowed.
Everything's not been filtered through here anymore. It's just a pure expression of like what's going on and what's being felt and what's being stored up and what's being not allowed out. And knowing that it's being held in a safe space, you know, that actually this is a time out of time.
This hole that feels kind of dark, that's always there, that feels kind of consuming. If you don't walk into it, you never find peace.
So, when the clients explored all the different parts of themselves that they want to explore on the carpet, they then get a choice about what process they want to do to bring themselves the healing that they're looking for in that session. And this can look almost an infinite number of different ways. Some clients choose inner child work, for example. Others choose support work, where they're bringing support or care or acceptance to a part of themselves. Some people choose to do anger work, where they're standing up and setting a boundary. Some people do grief work. Some people do work with the inner critic or with blocks, parts of themselves that are stopping them from moving forward. And other people do work exploring parts of themselves that are holding all their power and trapping all their power. And they explore those parts with the aim of releasing the power that's held there. And what's the evil shadow that you fear?
I'll lose my temper.
Okay, that's the bit we want then. That's the fear, because that's what's stopping you. That's the black, okay, dark, cold.
I'm very scared of that. I've always thought, you know, it's the side of me that wants to meet those kids that bullied me at school as an adult and go over and say, I've been waiting for you all my life. That is out of control and it's almost worth not going there, staying in the green.
Yes.
I don't, you know, it's all very well, the purple, that's good, that speaks my truth, but this guy would just torture them.
And when do you hear that part of you speak up? When are you aware of it?
When I feel used, when I'm being bullied, when the green or the purple just aren't working. But what happens if it possesses me and I go mad? It's that scary and I see it in the world and I see it in a lot of men and I see they are intoxicated by it and I see that it makes them forget every other human part of themselves.
Could it be that you don't step into the purple as often as you would like to?
Yes, you see, the purple is right next to the green, it's equal. But the black is in the shadow, it's behind. So, it takes over and it can rule.
But the purple, you like as well, but there's a risk there that it's going to flip into the black. And the rationale for exploring the black would be to enable you to inhabit the purple more comfortably, more regularly as a part of yourself. Because if you get to know the black more, if you take some of the fear out of it, that fear won't be there. It sounds to me almost as though you have to be pushed a bit to go into the purple. The black's the unknown part of you, which is limiting you ultimately, because you're avoiding being in there. And then it maybe comes out in shadowy ways, like you say, the irritability and so on.
The possibilities I might find out that holding that side, getting to know that side of me has some use. At the moment, I don't have a choice. I'm not going there. But maybe if I had a choice, if I knew that it was my choice, I'd get some mojo back. Maybe I'd find some power. So, here was an opportunity to get that dark side, that predatory side of me, that masculine power and to explore it. And as Mary Ann helped me with, she said, just have fun with it, which was a bit scary. But, you know, I was there to do the work and I trust this carpet work, this shadow work. So, I went for it. One of my fears was that I might like it too much. I might like being this strong, predatory, aggressive, successful man that I see in other men. What I realised was that there was a presence sitting behind me that was a strong, leading, heart centred, powerful and yet compassionate part of myself that was really, really authentic in me, that was just watching what was going on and really holding the space for me. And that was separate from Mary Ann, who was holding the space in front of me. So, I was really surrounded by this protective presence while I was able to go into whatever I needed to explore.
So, when people have the opportunity to step into a part of themselves that they're really frightened of, a part that they fear might be really dangerous or destructive, they can really get to know that part of themselves and find out what it is at its worst, if you like, to allow it to act out fully, which they never normally get the chance to do in their everyday life. And going through that process gives them back control over that side of themselves. Once they know what it looks like and what it feels like, they have a much better chance of being able to stop behaving like that in their everyday lives. So, just feel that energy in your body.
There's this kind of joy in my belly, this freedom in my belly of like unletting go of something, of enjoying it, of this joy of right, yeah, finally, let's let him out. Underneath all that tension, all that power, there's something in the centre of me that can relax. I'm safe and there's that sense of, ah, at last, I'm not vulnerable in any way.
Clients also find that once their power is kind of released in that process, they then have free access to their power and they can use it in whatever way they wish. So, whereas before, if you like, their power was tied up in a destructive part of themselves, now it's freed up and they have access to that power and they can use it to really serve themselves and serve others in their life. And see if you can get a sense of what this energy really wants for you.
Protect. Defend. Take what's mine.
Protect, defend, take what's yours.
Survive. Whatever the cost.
But for you, what does it want for you?
Success.
There's often hidden gems in the shadows. So, once we've got to know them, we can choose which parts we want to keep and which parts we want to not use.
Being able to actually take my power back and I think, yeah, like especially rage work, anger work, being able to really be like own that and that's okay, like it's not, there's nothing wrong. It's like I'm actually harnessing that power. I can practise just using it now and then I'll have more control over it. That whole dynamic is just, yeah, amazing.
And realising you actually don't, I actually didn't want to be a bad person. Like it's naturally, there's just instinct, like you don't really, now I explore that. I don't want to be that type of person and it just cleans out the shit. So, you've got like, okay, that's what that anger looks like, good anger, healthy anger. That's what it looks like.
And then at the end, you're able to sit back down and reflect on what has happened and go back in and have an embodied experience. There is some resolution that occurs and it's all client led. The client explains what they need to happen.
So, what would you like to do with that now? We can kind of try and integrate that for you, if you like. We've got some time left for you to, you know, you want to be clear in what your needs are and to decide who you are and then stand up. So, I wonder if this energy that you reclaimed can help you with any of that.
Almost like a cloak.
Right, yes.
Not round my shoulders, but sort of down the spine. That kind of could go, need to wings.
I like that.
If necessary, which goes under which. Well, this is the loving side which is underneath it. So, I think I'm going to go for this. So, that's round there, because ultimately, just choose love. That's underneath, but it's vulnerable. So, the purple. Let me tell you what, let's do this. Rather than overshadow the green, let's wear the purple. Like that. And then the green is there, but the purple is like the honour, the...
Yeah, yeah.
The right of office.
Wonderful.
Like I know who I am, like I know what's needed, like I know. No one else is going to influence the way or make me doubt what I know. It feels in my body, it doesn't feel in my head or my heart or my forehead or like that. It feels like, hmm, you know what, it's there.
It leaves me grateful, exhilarated often, like, okay, brilliant. And then afterwards grounded and going, okay, I've integrated that. So, it's more, it's a subtle kind of refinement that's ongoing now.
I think what I really reclaimed was definitely a power. It's part of that person I put aside meant I couldn't have fun. Yeah, I think a part of that was like, I can have fun and I can shine bright, like I can be playful and creative and I can shine. Don't door yourself down, because that's what you've done.
The golden child, if you like, in me was able to come out. And more recently, I find I have a part of me that's childlike and playful and a little bit wild and fun that I've never known before in my life. A really innocent, playful, joyful part of me.
I am not dangerous as a person. I'm actually a deeply loving, compassionate person and I could really see that and I got that from myself.
And I was like, oh, I'm not too emotional. It's that word, it's the too part. It's like emotional, yeah, I'll own that. You know, do I cry easily? Yes, I'll own that, you know, do I, yes, all of that, but not the word too, because that's the judgement of other people.
It's an energy which is useful for me and I can use to, in a clean and healthy way, to set boundaries, you know, be assertive, get what I want without having to destroy things in the way. So, I learnt that if I can access it in... if I can access it in a conscious way, um maybe as you with a heart center leader guiding me, then it can be, it's 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 a part of my power, a part of my strength, part of my masculinity or part of my person, which I've locked away and not used really.
What I think massive thing that came up for me was forgiveness. Yeah, forgiving myself for when I was younger and some of the mistakes I've made. He was trying to do the best he could to make everything work, to keep the harmony. Yeah, so I sort of unlocked that space. And yeah, it gave me a lot of freedom to say, wow, you ain't that bad, real. You ain't that bad of a guy.
I've been having to grow a sense of a kind of healthy adult and that kind of powerful part of myself. And so it's kind of been, I've been able to sort of practise that part of myself um and still have a lot of time crying on on the carpet at the same time and then be like, oh, actually, but I'm okay. I can manage this and dip in and out.
What I got from grieving fully for my dad was the ability to choose how I remembered him. I realised I didn't have to stay connected to the parts of him that were holding me back. I could choose a way to take the loving, warm, positive qualities that I remembered in him and have those living inside me and let go of the darker emotions and thoughts that I associated with him. And just take the gold.
Doing this work has enabled me to go, you know what? I'm as valid and as real and without having it to be, without having to be forceful or pushed, just it is who I am. I am a valid human being who counts and it counts that I am here.
Acceptance. My daughter, she has a tantrum. Instead of me like trying to shut it down, I can let her express that because I know that she defending herself and her having her own power is important. So I don't want to take that away from her. So first of all, it's like, I welcome all of that in. I can welcome all my daughter into a space, you know, and quickly like to say, cool. And then explore that with her instead of trying to say, that's not allowed.
This, it's a very powerful and empowering uh way of working. And that's why I think it's valuable to society because we're not saying you're broken. We're just saying some of you is hiding in the dark.
And that this stuff works. Like this stuff really works and for me is more powerful than normal therapy. So like, if this is really your passion, what you want to do, well, go for it. Because, yeah, I feel like I naturally kind of flow with it and it 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 speaks to me. So, yeah.
If we're all more self aware and more aware of this stuff, if we could bring our heart center leaders to bear more often and more consistently, wouldn't the world be a better place? Would we get along with each other a lot better? We'd be, yeah, we'd we'd stop destroying it and destroying ourselves. Yeah, but maybe that's a big ask, one person at a time, yeah.